February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Village Board meeting minutes, if I can have a.
February, yeah.
Oh, they say, I said it, February?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I had an implant today, so I might be a little foggy, but anyway, I'll take a motion in a second to approve, Carleen and Jenna, any, any discussion on the, the minutes. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, okay. We'll go to public appearances, comments, communications, A is public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. People have three minutes to speak before the board. Anybody here to speak or want to speak to the board? Okay, come on up. You have three minutes, tell us your name and your address, please, if you would.
My name is Joe Spock, four seven five Clidell Street. I'm speaking on behalf of the mowing proposal. I just want to thank, I talked with a lot of you on the phone in the past like month or so, so thank you for your time, taking that time out of your day to do that. I just wanted to reiterate my position on that and just, just wanted to keep that fresh. And then also, just to look ahead in your packet, I did put in a proposal so that hopefully that High Meadows Dry Basin area can be put on a future agenda. So hopefully you can consider putting that on the agenda so an action can be taken on that. That'd be much appreciated. I guess I'll just open it if you, any of the board members had any questions for me on it, but otherwise I think I don't want, I don't need to restate all my thoughts on it right now.
Okay.
But, thank you.
Okay, Joe, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else in the audience? I see none, okay, we'll move along then. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, all right, yep.
My name's Patrick Kelly. I live at four four three Clidell Street. My backyard joins the land that surrounds High Meadows Park. I believe this land is called the High Meadows Basin. I'd like to comment on the memo titled Village Mowing Program and Recommendations, made available by the Public Works Director on February tenth of this year. In it, he proposes to reduce mowing of the High Meadows Basin to twice annually. There are multiple reasons to keep mowing on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. The High Meadows Basin is an established pace, excuse me, established space for overflow recreation, especially but by no means exclusively during the soccer season. It's typically dry and it's all grass, which means it's a natural continuation of the park's recreation space. Moreover, it has broad public access. It may be retentionary on paper, but in reality, this space is a park. For that reason, it deserves higher mowing priority compared to spaces that are regularly wet, not connected to existing parks or fenced in. While on the topic of reduced mowing, I would like to focus the remainder of my time on a specific passage from the Public Works Memo, which in reference to No Mow May reads, quote, "Many people who did complain also believe that the taller grass increased the number of ticks, mosquitoes, and other wildlife. I don't think there is any concrete evidence of this other than opinion," end quote. In response to that assertion, excuse me, in response to that assertion, I would like to say it's great that so many members of the community love nature. They should keep in mind that nature most assuredly does not love them back. The world is not a Disney movie. When you open the door to nature, you don't get to pick and choose what walks through. The habitats that foster pollinating insects also host rodents, ticks, and mosquitoes, which means they don't just offer us nice flowers, they also offer us Lyme disease, encephalitis, and rabies, among a myriad of other vicious pathogens. This is a fact. This is not my opinion. Naturalists have studied these animals for centuries, and epidemiologists have made similar close study of the diseases that these animals produce and spread. Their observations of these animals' habitats and behavior are neither obscure nor controversial. The implication, therefore, that it is somehow incumbent upon me to provide evidence for what has been common knowledge for hundreds of years is unreasonable. Frankly, it's insulting. People are a part of nature too. We're the part that pays taxes. I bought a house next to a park, not a vacant lot. I do not accept that a village which is rebuilding the library, completely rebuilding the J.C. Park, and replacing a significant stretch of Jamesville Street and which just passed a new wheel tax, can't afford to continue providing the basic mowing services it has provided for years, especially when those basic services carry a very real public health significance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, sir, come on up.
Hi, my name is Jim Wunsch, and I also live at four six seven Clidell Street, so talking about the same thing. And I had sent emails to a lot of the members, and I appreciate the fact that I got responses back. I, I really appreciate the time and effort that you guys put into the replies. And I'm not going to go through everything I said on that, and I know Joe talked about the soccer, you know, and so the thing that I wanted to mention is, I know last, this came up a few years ago, and that, I know that some, it was mentioned by some of the members at that time after the fact that if they were, they never knew how nice it was back there because they had never seen it. And I just invite everybody, you know, involved in this decision to maybe make a trip there or drive by and go into the park and just see, you know, the park is this part, but then the, you know, green space slash retention or whatever it's called, you know, goes further, but it's just a continuation of it. And that's what a lot of the people use for, you know, like the soccer, not only the soccer games, but then, you know, the people sitting there watching them, the next teams that are practicing, they'll be there, you know, and sometimes even the other games that are going on, there's no place for them to practice there, so they come before their game to go there. And I think it would just be a bad way to present our village if, you know, if you do have a game going on there and you have all this tall grass and everything going, that I think it would just, you know, hurt our image too. So, and the other thing I know that came up last time is somebody had mentioned, well, you know, you guys think that that's just your park or whatever, and it's not just for the neighbors that it aligns to. It's, it's more of a way of building community with, you know, people from a block or two will come. Because I've had people come to my house and say, well, you know, we wanted to go to the park. Is it okay, instead of going all the way around to the entrance, if we just go through your yard? And it's like, yeah, sure, you can do that, you know, and then they use it for, you know, like flying kites or playing baseball and stuff. And I know that our neighborhood too has had like block parties, if you will, in that area. And it's not just, you know, our block, but it's Scott Street, it's Ames, it's, you know, so it is more of a community. And it's, I, like I said in my email, I think we're getting so separated. It's any way we can have to build community is an advantage, so, and that's pretty much all I had. But thank you again for your time.
All right, Jim, thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Joe Bratz, I'm also on Clidell Street, four five one Clidell Street. I sent a few of you emails the other week as well, so appreciate the feedback and you guys taking the time to listen to all of us tonight. I'll be short and sweet. My kind of point of view is we, my wife and I moved here in 2015. We looked at a bunch of different houses throughout Dane County. Neither of us were from the Madison area originally. We had a few different locations that we really truly loved outside of Oregon, but the house on Clidell with the open green space in the park was really what sold us on it. We wanted to start a family here, knowing that our boys could play there. There's a park, there's a soccer field, you guys have heard the pitch. It's, it's a beautiful area, it's, I think it stands out from any other quote-unquote retention area. So it was definitely a seller. It's something we're proud of when we bring folks in from outside of Oregon. We say, hey, we have this whole great area in the backyard, and the kids have a ton of fun, the adults have a ton of fun, it's, it's used regularly. So it's just a great space, and I think last, we had another member, our neighbor couldn't make it tonight, he's working at the hospital, but to speak to one of Patrick's points, when the grass is tall, last year for No Mow May, our neighbors did get a tick and end up with Lyme disease. So there is that risk of not mowing because it backs right up to our properties. When the grass gets tall, there is that, and I worry about that for my children, for the people at the soccer field that have historically spread out into that area. So that is a concern of ours if it is not maintained regularly, so I think that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. All right, let's go to five, board approval of vouchers. Email eleven million sixty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-one cents. I get a motion in a second, we'll get her on the table. I got one from Phil and Carleen. All right, questions, anybody, the vouchers? Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, number one two four nine two, this isn't really a question about the voucher, it's more of a question for the chief. I assume this is, this for a twenty twenty-three Ford Explorer, which I assume is a purchase of a new vehicle. Are, is the police department starting to look into electric vehicles and squad cars?
So, this topic's come up many times in the Chiefs, being my Chiefs Association meeting. I'm hearing nothing but negative feedback so far. We draw a lot of power with all of the other equipment that we have stored in the vehicles, and right now, the squads just can't keep up with it. So an example of that would be another community, I won't name them because I don't have permission to name them, but they have one squad they use twenty-four seven. They were out at a traffic crash involving injury, and unfortunately, a short period of time, that squad was dead. Squad lights, the siren, everything was done, and they actually had to be pulled from the scene. So I want to wait until we see other departments find a very viable and reliable option, but I haven't seen that yet.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, though.
All right, anybody else, questions? Okay, Candy, voice vote?
Wunsch?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bilo?
Yes.
Bashin?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
And Dave Campton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we can go to six, my favorite, and nothing on tonight, no consent agenda items, no items tonight. Move along to seven, report of committees. Items offered discussion, possible action. Seven A is the Oregon Fire Area Fire EMS District Commission meeting minutes. It was in our packet for information only. Seven B is the ad hoc public art committee, and, let's read. So one is review of the June tenth public art fair. And I'll, I'll give an update since I'm a committee member. We absolutely put the, the village as a sponsor. We have fif, right now we have fifteen sponsors, and we have a, all the banks and TDS, and Hy-Vee is a sponsor, and so we, we have good sponsorship. And we have, the applications are out, we have, they're not due until the end of March. We have over fifteen back already from artists, so we'll send another sort of reminder. We're looking for probably twenty-five, thirty for that. So we, we, we think it's a no-brainer to have the village as a sponsor. We're not asking for any funds or anything from the village. We'll, you know, through our sponsorships from others, we'll raise the money. But, I mean, part of our, part of our feeling is it's important that we recognize the village as a sponsor, and this is, this is, we want people to, to want to come and, and be part of the village that day. So that's kind of an update, I'll, I'll keep you sort of apprised as we sort of go forward. I could just say the other piece on the Eau Claire sculptures, we, we don't know exact, we don't, we haven't seen any yet. What our choices are, we're hoping any day now to see because they would like to, would like to have them installed at the end of May. And so what we're sort of doing is trying to do this in conjunction with the art fair. Another reason to have people come to the village is to see the, the new sculptures. And I'll just say that Jeff and I, about a week ago, went around for a couple hours and identified like twenty different spots that there could be potentially public art, and that'll, that'll be coming back to, to this board and the plant commission for approval. So, so things are moving, we're excited, and I'll, I'll keep everybody apprised as how we, how we're doing. Yeah, Carleen?
I have one question, and I, this is a jury show, and I just want, yeah, so what's the, who's the jury?
So the committee, committee obviously will, the artists and things will jury, and then I think part of our policy is that we can, we can ask others to sort of come in and help us jury as well. So, so I think you all know, with a jury, you get some pretty, you get some pretty nice, high-quality art, and that's kind of what we're striving for, so. Anybody else? I'll keep you, keep you up, up to date, so. So Martin, yeah, you want a motion?
Yeah, just to confirm the support of the board.
Yeah, so if we can get a support from the board as the, the village's support for the art fair, as a kind of, I mentioned, and as a sponsor, that would be good. Mike, motion, okay? And, yeah, all right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, all right, thank you. Okay, we can go to eight, unfinished business, items offered discussion, possible action. Eight A is presentation, consideration of water utility rate study. Staff recommendation is motion to approve, submittal to the Public Service Commission, rate case application as presented, and I think it's like Lauren and Ellers, am I right?
Yes, good evening. My name is Lisa Trabutuski, and I also have my colleague Brian Raymer behind me with Ellers. You engaged with us to conduct a water rate study, and so we're here to present the results of that. First, we'll take a look at where the utility has been historically, identify some strengths and weaknesses, and then the reason for the conventional rate case, noting that your last conventional rate case was March of two thousand and four. Your last simplified rate case was December of two thousand and eleven. And then we'll talk about debt coverage. Not only do you have, when you have revenue debt, you have to maintain a certain debt coverage requirement, but we like to consider the all-in debt coverage, and we'll discuss that more as, as well as the impact to the average residential user. So looking at the revenues, historically, when you want to figure out the revenues that you need to cover the cost of the system, you can do that on a cash basis and a utility basis. And the utility basis is what the PSC uses. Focusing on the cash basis first, that is looking at your operating and maintenance expenses, that includes your pilot as well as your debt payments, noting that the estimates for two thousand and twenty-two, you did take out additional debt in two thousand and twenty-two. The figure there does not reflect any of that as payments start in two thousand and twenty-three. And then you have your cash funded capital, less any of your other revenues that includes interest income. Then you benchmark that against your user rate revenue to determine what your rate adequacy is. Focusing on the utility basis, that looks at your operating and maintenance expenses, that includes your pilot, the depreciation, as well as you have a net investment rate base and a rate of return on that, less those other revenues, including interest income, and benchmarking that against what your user rate revenue is. And you can see with the PSC, the utility basis, that in two thousand and twenty-two, based on what you estimate, the rates are not adequate by about sixteen percent. Now looking more historically on a financial performance basis, you can see that you do have a strong and increasing reserve, but note that in the two thousand and twenty-two, that level where it goes up does include unspent bond proceeds. Then looking at the all-in debt coverage, so that is strong, but you can see that your revenue is available for debt service, is dropping off as well as your debt will be increasing due to that debt you took out in two thousand and twenty-two. And when we talk about all-in debt coverage, we consider your revenue debt, your general obligation debt, your operating and maintenance expenses, as well as your pilot, and making sure that you can cover all of those costs. Next, we want to talk about your operating ratio that includes depreciation. Just some concerns there, that making sure this is where you want to make sure your rates are adequate to cover those operating and maintenance that are, expenses that are very volatile. As you can see, two thousand and nineteen was a very high operating and maintenance expense year. And then you also want to make sure that you're able to cover that depreciation. So those are two things that you want to consider, making sure that your rates are adequate. And so with that, we'll talk about the conventional rate case. We show the two thousand and twenty-one actual, your estimated two thousand and twenty-two, and then what the test year is that, for the conventional rate case. I do want to note that we had some changes on Friday after this was already produced that is actually going to increase the percentage to thirty-five point seven percent. Rate adjustment needed, and we'll talk about later dollar amounts, but just note that that is about eight dollars on an average residential user. We'll go into more detail about that later. And then we want to note that in the test year, when you do a application for rate adjustments, when you look at your operating and maintenance expenses, you want to do some normalizations because as you noted, the operating maintenance is volatile, it's up and down depending on well rehabs or hydrant, painting, whatever you have, and we take and we normalize those expenses to make sure that your rates are sufficient to cover those. And then also noting that the reason for a increase is if you focus on that capital area, so your net investment rate base does increase by one point five million, and so that does also increase your depreciation expense, as well as you have increasing operating and maintenance expenses. So on this page, we show a long-range cash flow analysis. On the top part, we show your revenues, your user rate revenues, and then projected, it'll be a thirty-five point seven percent now with the two thousand and twenty-three year, and then some projected simplified rate increases if you would qualify or if you feel that you need them, we'll get into more detail of that later. And then below that, you have those other revenues, and then you have your operating and maintenance expenses, your pilot payment, and then you have that net before debt service. And you want that to be a minimum one point two five above what your total debt service payment is. And you'll note the net annual cash flow line where you have some negatives. Note that you do borrow for a couple years' worth of projects, as well as you're going to be using some additional cash reserves instead of borrowing because you do have sufficient cash to pay for some of your capital. So with the conventional rate case, the beginning years, you can see that it does spike. Your ending cash is a lot higher than what your ending recommended reserve are, but again, that is some unspent bond proceeds. And so looking into the future, those rate adjustments, you may not need, depending on where your cash position is and whether you're using cash to either downsize your debt or to fund your capital expenses. So that's where we would maintain, you want to look at that every year at execution when you're going to issue debt or consider, consider issuing debt. You want to look at where your cash reserves are and maybe use some cash on hand to downsize that debt, and that does affect then the rate, future rate increases that you may need. Again, we talked about the all-in debt coverage, this is looking into the future years. The dark orange is your existing debt, the light orange is your new debt, and then the green line is that minimum amount that you want to have. So you want that purple line to stay above that green line. So the impact on an average residential user with the thirty-five point seven percent increase, it actually will be about seven dollars and ninety-five cents. Note that in here showing all these increases, if they were to happen over a ten-year period, per month, it would be fourteen dollars and forty-one cents more that they would pay. But to put that in perspective, you'd be adding about eleven point five million of additional capital. So that is funding not only your operating and maintenance expenses, but also that additional capital. And then to the right, we do show a percentage, we benchmark that against your median household income, making sure that you're staying in, the American Waterworks Association recommends staying between two to three percent per utility, and you can see that based on your median household income, you're way under that, showing that rates are affordable. The next page, we're going to talk about this page, but then there was also another sheet that was handed out tonight that we'll talk about at the same time. So this is a tool that the PSC has, and we did where it looks at the rates against a fifty-mile radius. The thing with this, though, is the rates are as of September first, two thousand and twenty, and that's why we provided an additional sheet. But note that your rates are still below, even with that thirty-five percent increase, still well below that medium, that dark green area. So you still have lower rates than people within the fifty-mile radius. The sheet that we handed out is Dane County-based, and we show where you are currently as well as the proposed rates. So you can see you're still on that, the bottom half, even with that thirty-five percent increase. Okay, all right. So tonight's action, we do recommend approve filing the PSC application. Once that's done, we show on the next slide a typical timeline. So this is, if I would file the application tomorrow, we estimate it usually takes about six to nine months before your rates would be implemented. So this shows that typical timeline where you would have rates implemented in October. And again, that's estimated, it depends on how many data requests that you have, and with not having a conventional rate case for almost twenty years, plus switching from a Class C to a Class A B, we do anticipate a lot of data requests, but hopefully we've answered some of those that we think they might ask.
Do you want to go back to your letter, or do you remember, or where do you want to go?
Keep going.
Yes, okay.
Yep, there it is. So I'm going to speak just to a small change in billing structure that we're proposing with this. If you guys were able to read the memo, there was a section on this irrigation meter class that we're looking at. This is just one big component, or one small component of the rate case, but it is probably the biggest change to, aside from the rates, the biggest change that customers will see as far as how they are billed. So today, the way that a customer is billed, oh, nope, can you go up to the, yep, there we go, thank you. So every customer is assigned a primary water meter, and that water meter is billed a fixed service charge as well as a volumetric usage charge. And that charge, or the rate, I'm sorry, let me start over there. That is billed for both water and sewer. So based on that primary meter, they're billed the two fixed charges for water and sewer, and then it is assumed that every gallon of water that goes through that meter is being discharged into the sewer system as well. So that volumetric use is used to calculate the volumetric charge for both water and sewer. So customers that tend to use a lot of water for a use that does not discharge to the sewer, and typically we're talking about landscaping and pool filling, those are the biggest that we see, they can request an additional water-only meter. So it's classed as what's called an additional meter right now with the PSC, but we typically colloquially call them water-only meters. And those have their own fixed charge, and their volumetric usage is then lumped
And their volumetric usage is then lumped with the primary meter usage, and it is all billed together. Now, they are not billed a sewer-fixed charge on that additional meter, nor are they billed volumetrically for sewer on that meter because it is assumed that it is not impacting the sewer system in any way. Can you go down to the next slide? So here is how our current tariff bills water usage volumetrically. And here is kind of the crux of the issue. So we have kind of a grade scale here, a rate block, declining rate block scale used. So the first 10,000 gallons used each month are billed at the highest rate per thousand gallons, and then the next 30,000 are billed at a lower rate. And then anything past 40,000 gallons is billed at the lowest rate. So it's kind of like buying in bulk at a grocery store. Can you go to the next one? So what we are proposing to do with this is to remove the additional meter class altogether from the tariff and add what's called an irrigation meter class instead. So this would make no changes to the way that primary meters are billed. Those would continue to be billed the same way. But the irrigation meter would be billed in a new way. So it would get its own fixed service charge. And then it would be billed, the usage through that meter would be billed volumetrically on its own new fee schedule. And what we are going to request is that that fee schedule be increasing instead of declining. So the usage through the primary meter would no longer be lumped with that water-only or irrigation meter. They would now be billed in two separate ways. Also note that that additional meter usage or that irrigation meter usage would still not be billed for sewer. So this would still be advantageous in that they're not paying that kind of double fee there. So there are a couple of benefits to this new approach, we think. Primarily, usage is, it is not, water usage is not like buying in bulk at a grocery store, at least practically. So the more, the higher users place additional stress on the system, it's not easier to supply that water the more you go. They're putting more strain on things like our wells, our pumps, and our pipes. So these higher users, users are really making it so that we have to spend more money more frequently to maintain our system. So this will go ahead and kind of even out how that maintenance actually is incurred by putting it more financially on those high users. Secondly, this helps to kind of apply rate increases that we're proposing tonight more equitably across users. So it's not placing as high a burden on those folks that use less water, who would, under our current structure, be shouldering more through the fixed charge and that higher use at the lower level. This is, again, shifting that financial responsibility more towards those high users. And lastly, it encourages water conservation and sustainability, and this one is pretty obvious. If you're paying more, the more that you buy, then you might be more interested in not irrigating your lawn every single night. You might be more inclined to go ahead and try to ratchet that down to a level that you really feel you need. So can you scroll down? So the last slide in here is just to give you a sense of what the scale of this actually is. I'm not even going to try to read the total volume use and irrigation volume use numbers that I have up there from here. My eyes aren't that good anymore. But to put it in perspective, we're talking about 13% of total water used in 2022 would have been classed as irrigation water. Now, one thing to consider is that there are a couple of meters in the village that are water-only meters but are used more for industrial processes. This does not include that. So those are their own thing. We would handle that individually with the consumer, but obviously, they're not irrigation meters, and we would not build them as such. So skipping back, we're talking about 13% of total water use. And that breaks down to about three-quarters of that was used by residential customers, about 4% was commercial customers, and then the remaining 20% was public authority customers. We proportionally, the burden on, or the percentage of residential water use was very similar to the percentage of overall water use. It was, I think, about 12% of residential water use was irrigation water. Public authority, it's about 34%. So I just want to highlight that it does probably affect the public authority customers proportionally the most out of all of our different customer classes.
You want questions? Ready? Okay. So Lauren, can I ask you about the irrigation thing?
Absolutely.
So with the separate meter, it would be, it would be cheaper, would it be cheaper because you're not charged going through the sewer?
That is the way it is right now, assuming you use enough water to break even. And I don't have the calculations in front of me, but the fixed service charge on our current water-only meter, I think for a three-quarter inch, which is our standard residential size, is $2.25. So you really don't have to use that much water to hit that break-even point.
Okay.
Keep in mind that, of course, you're probably not using it over the winters, so you are having to accommodate that during the summer. But most folks that have that installed do so because they've run the numbers and they definitely make out better as a result of having it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, yeah, Carleen?
So I have three questions. I read the memo, and I talked to Lauren today because I wanted to make sure I was asking questions that made sense. My understanding is that we cannot use most of the surplus that is now accumulated to help offset this increase because there are impact fees that are designated specifically for well six and other things. Is that correct?
Actually, with the impact fees, those are considered contributed, so those don't count towards that net investment rate base. So if you didn't use impact fees and you had used either debt or cash, non-impact fee cash, to fund that, that net investment rate base would be higher, and that rate of return amount would be higher, if that makes sense.
I think it does.
Okay.
The bottom line is that it's kind of off limits to really offset this need for a substantial rate increase.
You could argue for a lower rate of return. We wouldn't recommend that. You have a lot of capital improvement projects coming up, so this is setting you in a good spot to be able to fund that and continue funding your operating and maintenance costs.
I just want to be able to answer the question when people say, we've got all that money sitting there, why don't we use it?
And you are using.
And we're using it for other capital projects.
Yeah, so you aren't borrowing this year for the projects that you have, and I think it's like 1.6 million.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
Yeah. So you are using a lot of the cash on hand, not only just the impact fee money, but also other cash reserves.
Right, okay. Then I have a second question, and it's about allocation of the bill. And I think you've kind of answered that, Lauren, but I want to make sure that I want to clarify that we have a lot of folks who live in the village, older folks in particular, who are on fixed incomes, and making sure that we are charging those folks who use a lot of water in a way that it hits them more than it does people who don't use as much water so that we can keep the fee set at a lower percentage of what's, of what's being charged to customers. Am I making sense?
Carleen, do you mind if I jump in and kind of?
Please, because I bantered this around with you today.
Yes.
Because there's a lot of words in here.
Yes, and my apologies, Lisa. I was going to talk to you about this ahead of time, but we had a family emergency, so I got here a little bit late. But what Carleen and I had discussed is, given how little control we have over how the PSC eventually dictates what we do, is there any way to indicate to the PSC that we're interested in possibly having a rate structure that puts more of the financial burden on the volumetric use side and less against that fixed service charge so that we're kind of shifting more towards the users of more water than that kind of base charge that everyone pays? Or is that not something that the PSC really lets you request at all? They kind of set the rules?
They have a cost of service rate design that takes and basically takes all your costs and determining how much is fixed, how much is volume, what allocation, and the effects on the system. You could consider going into an inclining rate blocks structure if you wanted, but you would really want to evaluate, you have a 10,000 is, 10,000 is your first rate block, considering how many people even go out of that. And then you could always change your block structure, too. But that would be evaluating people's usage and determining. I know Ashgosh recently looked at doing like a lifeline rate where the first block is cheaper and then it inclines, but it's really set at a very low, just the first, they do cubic feet, so the first 200. So there's different structures that you can look at, but it would be really evaluating your data and people's usage and, right, how that would affect them.
Okay, and then last question, I think, Martin, this is for you. If, knowing that we have a lot of folks on fixed incomes and that a rate increase, even a small rate increase, can impact them, are there programs that we can investigate that we could make available probably via the water bill to let them know that if they can't make their, their payments, that there are, that there are subsidies or programs to help with that?
You mean programs that are not operated by the village that are?
Right.
Like state programs or whatever?
Correct.
Yeah, I think so. And actually, I think one of the things that we're, we're going to have to do as part of this rate case is transition away from the postcard to an envelope and a bill, an actual sheet of paper. And I think that creates opportunities for us to actually put flyers and other information in those water bills now.
Yeah, great. Thank you for that. Thank you, Lauren and Lisa.
All right, others, yeah, Mike?
Yeah, to follow up on Carleen's second question about restructuring rates to hit higher users, I assume, I assume that the irrigation meter does some of that because currently it's, I would think, our lower-rate users are subsidizing our higher-rate users by the current structure.
To some extent, yes.
But you had mentioned, I'm sorry, I forget your name offhand, but you had mentioned that we needed to do more of a usage study. Is that not part of this PSC where we could look at our rates or?
It really depends on what you want to accomplish. If it's conserving water, you definitely want to look at doing an inclining rate block structure. I mean, you can't just structure rates just to fit a certain income class. I mean, it has to be fair. So, yeah, it depends on what you want to accomplish and then determining where people fall in and if you want to do inclining, declining, what you currently have, a flat rate, do you want a smaller chunk of your first rate block to be at that lower rate? But it would really be evaluating how much usage people are doing and then, yeah, what your goals are for that.
So how much effort is that?
I would, it depends, I don't know what your data is like and how you can pull that.
So we have, I think we, we did kind of do some of that as far as just separating out usage by rate, class, block. It sounds like this would be a little bit more in-depth, and I can just speak to the irrigation meter work. That was, it was, it took some time. The structure of our software is not really conducive to having it do much that's creative. I know that we are moving to a new software system very shortly, and that new system might make this an easier lift. I think that it's, it's a more, much more up-to-date system. But right now, it's, it's certainly doable. It, it would just take some clever data export and, and kind of crunching and working with Lisa here to, to see what exactly the PSC is going to want from us.
My concern, my concern here, and I think Carleen's might be the same, is we're layering a lot of extra taxes on our residents, and our low-income residents are frankly struggling. And if there's any way that, that we could arrange this to have less of an impact on our fixed-income people, which I believe right now it is almost $100 a year for just the increase that we're proposing for next year, that's a lot of money for someone on a fixed income, and I would like to see that reduced if we could.
Brian just brought up you could do where you have a tariff, a separate schedule for your residential and separate for non-residential. Some have a residential, some have residential multifamily, and then non-residential schedules. But note that you can't take what would be allocated as what revenues the residential needs to make up of your rates to, because that's what they cause on the system, and shift that to non-residential. So you could work in the class. Again, if you do want to do that, the PSC does require more information. You have to fill out a sheet breaking it down by every so many thousands of gallons and how many bills reach that. So that's something that the board wants to do. It's certain, certainly we can look into that. It would delay this process for this rate case.
But if we don't delay this process for this rate case, we're locked in for conceivably years till we do another simplified rate case, correct? Or would it take another?
The simplified is just a percentage overall. When you do a conventional rate case, they actually reallocate fixed charge to, and volumetric charges. But when you simplify it, it's just a straight percentage on your fixed and volumetric.
So if we don't do it now, we're going to live with this?
For the next, however, meet in the years until you would do a conventional rate case.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I think the question really for the board is in terms of resources. So I think doing something like that would obviously generate a large amount of work that needs to be done to, to effectuate it, I'm guessing, both in terms of pre-work before the application and I'm sure during the application process as well with the PSC.
Yep.
So, and if I understand correctly, too, if we don't submit this within, what is it, 30 or 60 days, something like that, we actually almost have to restart the pre-work again because there's certain deadlines in terms of years?
Correct. So if we don't have this filed by July 31st, we would have to change test years.
So you'd have to redo all the work that's been done already.
We would have to.
So I think, you know, the question I think for the board is, you know, is that the amount of resources that need to be taken to do that work what you want to do? Or is it how it currently is laid out, is that sufficient? And I think part of what is being proposed here is, you know, we see that issue as well, obviously, and I think the irrigation meter is trying to mitigate that. And I think, you know, looking at, you know, this handout here, you know, even with 35% increase, we're still in the bottom 50% of water rates within Dane County. So it's certainly something to keep an eye on. I think we're all cognizant of it. But I think if we're, if we're asking, if you're asking to go a step farther in terms of addressing that, you know, just be aware that there's going to be some, some things that will be drawbacks to doing that as well. And what that produces in terms of actual effect on the rates may be pretty minimal.
All right, Phil?
I just, I have a question. So I heard two things that I, that I want to make sure I heard them correctly. One is, you're not able to propose something different in terms of rate structure that would target or differentiate people based on income or what have you. So that's just not in the cards. You can't target people on fixed incomes, for example, and try and address that concern. So what I heard was that there would be maybe some way to make, to bring down the cost of maybe the first couple hundred gallons of water use that, so you might be able to say, well, for everyone, we'll reduce maybe the cost of the first amount of water they use and then increase the cost of water for everyone as their use increases. Did I hear that correctly?
Correct. So that would be an inclining rate block structure. Right now, you have a declining rate block structure. So it would just, right, so right now, the, the first block pays the most and then as you hit the other blocks, the rate goes down.
And for volumetric, you're proposing changing that, right? For the irrigation.
For the irrigation.
But what about for, what about for non-irrigation use?
So that would currently how it is right now, how we would file it. It would be the same for, so non-irrigation, they would still be a declining rate block structure with the current set amounts in each block. And then have the irrigation meters separate charge. And typically, they just have one rate for all usage that's higher than the normal rate.
That's what would be proposed?
That's what's being proposed.
So this change, this theoretical change in approach that you're talking about would be instead of a declining structure for non-irrigation or regular water use, it would be not, it would be an increasing? And, and the question I have is, I mean, is there any way to assess like what the actual potential impact that is on folks who might choose to conserve more water and pay less? Or is this a material difference or is this, any sense of that?
So we did a cost of service of what the PSC does normally. You turn in the application and they conduct the cost of service study and rate design. We have for other places conducted the cost of service, like I said, Oshkosh. We recently looked at that lifeline rate and they kept their current structure. Because when we evaluated it, what the difference that would help that lower usage, and you're assuming then that the lower income is using less water, where you could have lower income that use a lot of water. So again, you might be assuming that your lower income is using less water. But the effect that that had wasn't that great and it actually placed a heavier burden on those higher users, which you would maybe assuming are, aren't low-income, but they very well could be.
Could be a family with, could be a family with young children.
The opposite effect, right. So it could have the complete opposite effect where you're actually, those higher, higher users may be actually paying more now than with that current rate structure.
Lisa, what, what is the, hello, where am I on? What it right now, for a three-quarter inch meter, what is our, our monthly just base, base meter charge? Isn't it like five or six bucks or something like that?
So your base charge for a 5/8 is $5.67.
So 5.67 and under the proposal, it would go up to six up seven something? Is that right?
I would have to do the math.
So, well, I can do it real quick. So 5.67, you said?
5.67 and let's say that that gets a 35.7% increase. So this is assuming that it gets.
Five, so 5.87. No, wait, that's not right. 5.67, 1.357? So 7.69. So it's, you know, so if somebody is wanting to be more conservative on the water they're using, I mean, technically, the, the bill's not going to change dramatically for them if they're using less water. This is what I'm saying. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Huh?
You're saying that they use less water, their bill wouldn't change much?
Well, their, their bill will, I mean, it's still encouraging peoples of all classes, of all incomes and everything like that to use less water. I mean, if they want lower bills, standard. But I guess the, the, the standard charge, the, the base meter charge does not change. It changes 35%. It's 35% of $5.46 or something like that. I think that's the scale we're talking about. It's not 35% of an annual char, or of a monthly charge of 20 bucks or something like that.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, we got Derek and then Carleen's got a question.
Yeah, mine's kind of a two-part question here. You've talked about declining and inclining volumetric charges with going from 244 for 1,000 gallons to 198 to 174. What happens if you do just a flat rate all at 244? And is that, are there any other municipalities in the area that do that? So as opposed to doing an inclining or declining, just it's 244 per 1,000 gallons of water across the board?
I would have to look at each utility unless you know off the top of your head. I don't know the, each utility's structures.
A lot of communities will end up deciding that if we were to look at kind of the, the base usage, kind of going through each customer and saying, who gets out of what block? Even changing the blocks, like Lisa did herself for Oshkosh. There just isn't a material difference. One way to maybe tackle what, what you might be looking for is exactly what you just kind of suggested is residential and multifamily get that flat tier. So the more you use, the more you're punished on your bill, right? Instead of declining for them where the other commercial, industrial, if you want to keep the declining block rate to say, we still want it to be attractive to conduct industrial business here, in as well as, they typically don't, you'll see that declining block rate because they don't use the spikes in the demand on a max hour, max day like a residential. You know, I got a family of four, shower in the morning, we're doing laundry at night. You know, there's spikes within the day. So that impacts your system like Lauren was speaking to. Where an industrial or commercial customer is more of a flat-lined, although it's 24/7, depending on the business. So that said, you can still keep it attractive to conduct business on your water bill by having that declining block rate structure. So you typically don't see the flat for the non-residential and multifamily. But you could, you could request a flat, you know, tier, just one flat rate for residential and multifamily. Know as well, when you actually calculate the rate impact, your revenue increase might be 35%. Your bill increase will be higher than that, right? Because now for those higher, as you go higher in usage for those customers, because now they're paying a higher tier. For example, let's say it's all 244, that's jumping 50 cents plus 35 cents, or 35% on the 244. So just considerations there. Is a high-use, low-income, is a low-income, low-use? You know, it's hard to answer those questions without asking.
I see where you're getting at there. Yeah, I mean, from my end, I don't see a whole lot of houses using over 30,000 gallons in a month. It's mostly commercial, industrial. But, thank you.
All right, Carleen?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that when I think about the goals that we have for this, at least I can speak for myself, it would be conservation and also minimizing the impact on people who live on fixed incomes and low incomes. And so somehow to be able to graduate things in a way that doesn't impact them as, as much. So I, I'm not an expert. I would refer that back to you all who are experts as the best way to do that. So what, what would be your best suggestions for those two, those two goals? I mean, am I alone in having those two goals? So I think I speak for the board when I say those are the two things that we would like to have happen.
I think the simplest one, you know, residential and multifamily, you could do the flat rate. That'll recover your costs. That'll be the financially responsible thing to do as a utility, you know, as well as send pricing signals. You use more water, you're paying more, albeit probably not a lot of residential users, maybe multifamily do, don't get out of the 10,000 per month. The other thing could just be to lower those blocks instead of changing to a flat. Just say it's the first 5,000 per month, because that's kind of what a typical, I think it's three-person family uses by the PSC standard. I don't know that anybody's actually measured that, but that's what they call their standard. The other item would be identifying customer assistance programs that the state has available. Switching to, you know, the billing method of putting in information through an envelope will help you maybe identify those who are of lower income because you'd have to apply for something like that in order to get it. So that would be an impactful change, as Martin mentioned. That said, we don't, we just don't see a lot, a lot of times that the lifeline rate makes any material difference when you have low rates like this. If you were one of the highest rates in the state, I would, you know, we would say it might be worth investigating. But it's, it's probably not going to be worth the time or the money required to kind of get to the exact lifeline, if you want to call it a lifeline rate. But tiered rate, that makes sense. But, you know, those simplified approaches of, you know, a flat tier or lowering the tiers, usage blocks, those can be impactful along with the billing type or that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that we're all just very cognizant of the fact that there are a lot of things hitting our village all at the same time. And we're asking the residents of the village to bear a lot. And so whatever we can do to try to mitigate that, especially for people who are already struggling, I think we should do. That's where I'm coming from.
All right, others? Yeah, Mike?
Does going to a flat rate take a lot more investigation? Versus not, you know, having an inclining? It would still improve over the situation where the more you use, the cheaper it gets. It would be better for sustainability. It would be better for conceivably those people that are interested in saving on their water to save on their water bill?
You just requested in the application, it's no additional effort if that's, but that's what they'll move forward with.
So that's, so that's not something that would delay us past July? Okay.
Yeah, Phil?
I can see, you know, the concerns about the impact particularly on low-income residents, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to support moving away from the biometric charges where the prices go down, just as this gentleman has mentioned. Many times you have industrial users that might be interested in coming into your community and certainly for some of them, they're going to be looking at the water rates. And I think if they see this fixed rate compared to neighboring communities, it has a significant impact on them and may make the difference.
I thought that that was something on residential, not on commercial.
No, I think it's, I think it's commercial. Maybe I'm wrong?
You can do, residential would have the flat. And then multifamily, you need to decide if multifamily is going to be flat or if you would keep it like your non-residential, which you could keep the same structure.
And can we do that within this submission?
Yep.
So, so just so I'm clear, so we could do, we could do, we could recommend a flat rate for the single family and multifamily and then leave the, the others, the what you're proposing?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Yeah, Amanda?
I, I would still kind of like to see both of these be inclining with usage. You know, I'm all for attracting businesses and stuff, but we also want businesses to conserve water. I think if, for serious about sustainability, that both of the, the commercial and non-commercial, whatever they're called, the rates should, should both be inclining to some extent. Is kind of what I'm thinking.
All right, who's, anybody else? Yeah, Jenna?
I guess, so I like, I like that we're having this discussion to try and mitigate the impact to the people in our community that are on fixed incomes and that are on lower income. And I think, I feel like I'd like to see some of that, those numbers out, like presented before we go forward, because I guess I'm a little, I don't know, I know we're talking about a flat rate versus, versus the declining. And I guess I'd just like to see that written out before I would make any decisions. I don't know if that's a, a thing we could get done.
Can we, can we do that and still make the timeframe? For July?
What would you, I guess it's more of a, what would you like to see? Just, just so we're. Yeah, 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 no, I, but like, are you wanting to see residential at an inclining block? At a flat or, you know, like what?
So I think that's part of the discussion that, that we need to have. But either way, I'm saying before we go forward, I'd like to see, whatever we decide. And I think maybe because of the discussion that we're having here, it might be of us to ask if you'd come back with both a flat rate and then maybe a, an increase, an incline rate. But, so we can visually see some of the things that we're talking about before we make a decision on how to move forward.
And just the impact on a bill, like from today's schedule versus what that would be for each option?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I'd love to hear what y'all's thoughts are, but it just, for me, as a visual person, that would be very helpful.
So we would, we, we want to compare a couple, some, some more, some options?
Yeah, we've talked about some different scenarios here, but to see that visually instead of just the conversation.
Plus, you have to, you'd have to do both the residential and the commercial ones together. So I think the problem is we might be asking them to do a lot of scenarios. Because if, if they're both inclining, that's one scenario. If one's flat and the other's inclining, that's one scenario. What if they're reversed, the other's flat and the other's inclining? I mean, we're asking for a lot of combinations here. So if there's a way we can narrow it down for them.
Absolutely, yeah. I guess I wasn't, I wasn't asking for all the scenarios. I think that's something we have to decide as a, as a board, what scenarios that we want? If we're going to have to.
All right, so Mike and then Phil?
Yeah, I gotta agree a little bit with, with Phil here. We do want to attract industry to Oregon. We do need that base to our community. We would have to, in order to, to address your concerns about an incline in the businesses, I think we would really have to look business by business by business. I guarantee you for a business like Lycon, that's a huge difference for them. They use a ton of water. It's in the nature of their business. If they want to conserve that water, yeah, maybe they can cut some, but there are still going to be higher costs for them across the board in our other industries like that. It's much easier for me to model, maybe because I live in a family, it's much easier for me to model what saving water looks like for a family than it does for Lycon or Wisco or the other industries that we have in our area. And I absolutely do not want to discourage industries from coming to Oregon.
I was just going to say, am I up?
Yeah, yeah.
Our concern seems to be about mainly an impact on lower income. And I'd like to see us just focus on that rather than the volume, the large volume units. Mike makes some good points. You can be sure that Lycon is conserving probably every bit of water they can because it's costing a whole bunch. You can be sure that Licon is conserving every, probably every bit of water they can, because it's costing a lot more. And so that's kind of self-regulating. The only other question, I don't know if anybody has this question, but what the average residential water bill is in our community? Anybody, any idea? Or is that something asked to you? I would know, but my wife pays.
Like per month?
Yeah.
Yeah, about $22.28.
Thank you.
Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, so, and I, I appreciate that certain, certain industries are, are water-heavy. That is, that is true. And, and Licon probably does try to do their best to conserve. I'm looking at these numbers though, like the, you know, in 2022, the irrigation volume used was 31 million plus gallons, but only 4% was, went to commercial customers. So when I look at the bills for, you know, if we're looking at, I don't know, whatever the rate would be for 40,000 gallons of water in a month, it doesn't seem like that much money to me. I mean, when you talk about a company like Licon, yeah, those, those rates would probably go up for them, but it doesn't feel like it's an outrageous amount. They do use more water. They're more strained on the system. I mean, I think we can justify that. I want them to stay in town, don't get me wrong, but I don't, I don't see the commercial uses currently being that big of a deal. So that, I guess, that's kind of where I'm at.
So one thing I just wanted to quick clarify, so Licon would not be included in these numbers, just because they are that industry. They're one of a couple of industries that, that I was kind of alluding to. But while they do have a water-only meter, it's dealt with differently now, and it would be in the future, because it's not an irrigation meter. It, it is more of a process water meter, I would say.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, it's a little unclear, I know.
Do, do we know what kind of volume that uses? Process meter?
We certainly do have that number. I don't have it off the top of my head, but Lisa and I worked through actually a pretty robust analysis of the top four industrial users and historical trends. So we do have that data. It's just saved on the server.
Derek, what's your, your hand?
Yeah, just kind of echo what Mike and Phil were kind of getting at. I think, yeah, the focus of this should probably stay with, within the residential and try and, and I understand what Amanda's saying with increased strain on businesses, but I've been in a lot of these businesses and places where they use millions of gallons of water throughout the course of the year. And I think if you do start to add some of that up, you're, especially as we're looking at, you know, potential expansion across the highway, you're going to scare some businesses off that may be interested in coming here. But I, I would like to see the focus of this kind of stuck with a potential flat rate within the residential.
Carleen?
I, I concur completely with what Derek just said. I'd like to see what it would look like for residential if there was a flat rate. That's what I'm personally asking for.
I just want to be clear, so residential and multifamily, correct?
Yes.
And, and can I just say, this isn't a hill I'm willing to die on. If everybody thinks flat rate for businesses, that's, I'm okay with that. I'm, I'm, it's not.
Not flat rate, declining.
Declining?
Declining for businesses as it is now and flat rate for residential. That's what I think we're talking about.
Okay.
Did I get that right?
Is it?
I, I think so, but it's a subject I'd be willing to hit again on a future date.
Yeah, Phil?
Yeah, okay.
Most residential customers use 10,000 or less, I think you said, so essentially a flat rate.
Correct.
Thank you.
Can I just jump in real quick? Just as input, one of the things that we were trying to do with this irrigation class is to kind of try to separate out what I would say is more of a luxury water use from everything else. And just keeping in mind, I think Lisa and Brian made a really good point, that it is sometimes hard to tell what's going on in somebody's houses. Somebody could have reasons for using a lot of water, you know, a single mom with multiple kids that wouldn't necessarily come across in just looking at their water usage. So this was kind of our attempt to try to pull out something that we, we felt really good about saying, probably you can cut this out without really dramatically impacting your, your lifestyle or hitting your pocketbook too hard if you choose to make changes. But that was, that was kind of the thinking behind separating this out to begin with versus going straight to billing things differently on the residential level.
I just do, I want to make one point, and I keep clarifying residential and multifamily. When you get to the multifamily, some of those are going to hit those higher rate blocks that are at a lower rate. And now if we do a flat rate for them, those multifamily customers may actually be paying more, if that makes sense.
Yeah, the one, we see communities, and it, and it depends on your customer makeup. And I, we, I, like I said, we haven't really been asked to do this yet for Oregon. So I'm going to make this comment broader. But the declining block rate, depending on your multifamily makeup, and then also similar thing, attraction, right? We want to keep rents low, not too low, not too high, you know, we want to keep rents attractive. There's consideration for declining with them as well, where the single family stays at a flat rate. So I, I think maybe what might help, and this is my, going to be kind of my final suggestion, is we can have the PSC actually send us, there's, they don't make this public, but for a request, they'll probably provide it. How many communities have by class, what rate block? And that might help in terms of if nobody else does the inclining rate block for a certain class. Okay, let's, let's not do that. Let's not be the unique ones, because businesses, you know, people might understand, okay, we don't want that. So I would say that might be one thing we can provide. In terms of changing to a flat residential only, you're really not going to see a change to this schedule, because most residents don't get out of that first rate block, which this was built off of. So there would be nothing that we would provide there. It would just, it would actually be more of a pricing signal to any customers that get out of that first rate block, which we could provide that use, you know, we could provide from the application, what, you know, how many customers do get out of the 10,000. And, and that might be beneficial. But the, the rates won't really change by switching the residential. You know, how much an average residential uses won't change, because it's not getting out of that rate block now. So just some considerations there, but maybe some context might help in terms of what other communities do and how they charge. We can provide that, you know, to the villages soon as the PSC gets back. And then it might be worth having another discussion, just on what interests you have and, and staff providing, staff and elders getting together to kind of talk through some of those things and maybe giving staff a chance to review it and, and us a chance to review it to provide recommendations as well, instead of kind of shooting in the dark.
So I personally am not ready to make a decision on this and have it submitted tomorrow. I think, you know, we have too many questions and it's a lot of information to try to process and give a decision on tonight. So I would move that we ask you to do those things and we come back to it as soon as you have that and discuss it further.
What exactly are we asking them to provide us, like as far as inclining and flat rate? I just want to be very clear before we give directions of what we want them to do.
I guess I would like to see flat rate for residential, flat rate for residential and multifamily, so we have that comparison. And a declining rate for commercial.
You want comparisons, other communities?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think.
Just non-residential, yeah.
Yeah. And then comparisons with, I mean, I, I don't know that it's going to make a difference. I mean, if I'm a, if I'm a rate payer, I don't care if it's more expensive someplace else. I want to know what I'm going to pay, and so I'm not as interested in that, but other people may be.
Or what I was saying, you, you mentioned what other communities have done.
Do you want to see that?
Sure, I mean, if you have those suggestions for us, I, I would think that that would be helpful.
Okay.
You okay with that, Amanda?
I guess the only difference is I would also like to see what maybe a flat rate on the, the commercial side would look like.
Is that?
I don't know, just, I, I have a hard time with the declining. I, I just feel like there needs to be an incentive to not use as much water, if at all possible. But.
So Carleen has got a motion.
You still need a second.
Starlene's, yeah. Carleen, are you okay with Amanda's?
For comparison?
Yeah.
Unless everybody's against the flat.
I just don't think that it's, I don't think it's a good idea for, for industrial development or any other kind of development to do that.
Yeah, Jenna?
I'd be happy to second Carleen's motion as is, without the addition of the commercial analysis on that rate.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so we got discussion, we're, we got, we got a motion in a second. Okay?
We'll still be able to complete this since then in the window. Yes.
They'll come back next time.
Well, that's, that's the question.
I was told.
Okay. And you get the PSC information from that in that time?
Yep.
Okay.
Part, so, do you understand what you're being asked to provide? And I think part of, I think part of, part of your question, Phil, is contingent on what happens after that information is provided. So if there's going to be something that happens after, that may have an impact on
I understand.
The application.
I just didn't want to cut us off right tonight.
Go ahead, Derek.
Given what you're being asked to do, do you see the percentages changing at all? I mean, just at a ballpark, any substantial changes to the, to what you've presented to us here before we ask you to do a whole lot of additional work? Because honestly, if it's not going to really create a substantial change, then I would question.
The revenue requirement wouldn't change, so that percentage increase needed to fund the operating and maintenance expenses and debt and depreciation, everything.
It's all going to stay the same.
Yep. So, yeah, they, that amount has to be divvied up.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Phil?
No, Jenna was there.
Oh, Jenna, go ahead.
So kind of to, or building off, I guess, of Derek's question, how much is this going to change, how much we owe elders for this analysis as well? Any estimate?
Amanda?
My only observation is that I'm not sure that the information will help you get at the issue you're concerned about getting at. Because if what you're being asked to, to, to see, what, what you're asking for is, show us what it looks like if, instead of a, a declining rate for residential, what does it look like if it's a flat rate for residential? And on the one, and, and will that allow you to evaluate whether you are helping folks who are on fixed incomes or who are relatively less able to, you know, to, to pay for water by comparing those two things? And the problem is, I don't think they're going to be able to tell you that, because you won't know, you know, which users are impacted. You'll be able to say, okay, now I can see that people who use this much water versus this much water are paying, you know, less or more. But you're not going to, I don't think you're going to know who that's going to land on unless there's something I'm missing here.
And that, that gets back to my, my point on resource allocation of, of time spent, consultant time. I don't think it's going to give you an answer to your question. And even if we were to go in a direction of, of some of the things that are being talked about, I don't know that they would have a marginal impact on, based on what's being presented here. And I don't know that it would even have an impact on the objectives that you're intending to make with trying to impact low income or.
So how do we do that?
Well, that's part of the problem with kind of the regulation that we're under, which is in some ways you can't, because the Public Service Commission controls that. I think what we've found and what we're proposing with the irrigation meter is we can find somewhere that we actually can make a change that we know will probably have a good impact on low-income people, because we know that it's a luxury water use, and that's mostly what it's being used for. And so we can pull some of that burden away from residential users and lower-income users and put it on those luxury users. So that's what's being proposed here, and that's what we've identified as something that actually has some substance that can have an impact. I don't think what, you know, is being asked here is, is going to give you the information that you need to further the objective that you want to make.
Phil?
I'm getting, I'm coming to the conclusion that regardless of what information comes back, we might, maybe reduce some people's bill by a dollar or two. I think if we look at staff time, consultant fees, I think our time would be better spent on village taxes or utility rates in a different way. So I wouldn't be able to support the motion.
Yeah, Derek?
At this point, I'm kind of in agreement with Phil. I think ultimately, and the census is set through the PSC. If we were to change the, the irrigation fees on that, is there any mechanism allowing for perhaps, say, a fund for low income that where some of that cash can be diverted into a village fund for, say, partner with the senior center or to help some of the low-income seniors? Is, I mean, and being regulated by the PSC, I'm assuming the answer to that question is going to be no, but I got to ask.
So the, actually Madison just approved the first utility-based customer assistance program. There's a model within that. It's specific to their utility, so it's filled with a lot of nuance. I think one of the bare-bones like necessities is administrative capacity to administer that program. So I think that's a strong consideration of maybe looking at customer count versus, you know, or bill count, I should say, versus staff and, you know, what, what capacity you have to handle that. So I would say as much of, that could be a good program, have, have consideration for that. And then the other component to that is there's actually some, you could do that on the sewer side and create your own, because you're non-regulated. So another consideration there to kind of think of maybe more efficient ways to complete that task. Although you could always, we can field the call with the Public Service Commission on following the Madison model, but I think staff should be obviously on the call as well to say, can we even do this? And then the other thing that I'll say is that will delay the case, not putting in the application, but it'll delay the case, because the PSC will ask for a bunch of information about the staff's ability to do these certain things and then how much cash you would be allocating to that. So there would delay the case, but there, that's the only model that's out there right now is the Madison model to, to do it. But I'm not saying it's, we can field the call, and then I think staff can come back with how that went at, at minimum. I don't, you know, and I think that might be worth investigating, but.
Yeah, Jenna?
If we were to explore that option, is it something that has to be done as we're working on this rate case?
You have to do it in the context of a conventional rate case, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, Phil?
There is something to preclude the village from, remaining something that Derek suggested, and that would be a much simpler route. If at some point the village board decided they wanted to pursue something like that and without involving consultants, it would be something that the village itself could do, in my opinion, unless, I don't know, tell me otherwise.
You mean using tax dollars, not water utility customer money?
Yeah, operating. I'm not suggesting it. I'm saying if you. I'm not suggesting it, I'm saying it could be done.
I think important thing to, if we zoom out on this whole issue, we're talking about a lot of things that are sort of built into the system of why the Public Service Commission exists to begin with. Ultimately, the PSC is a consumer protection agency. They, they have built these systems and these structures and how they design these rates, so that they are fair and they are justified. And so we're trying to kind of add on to all those things, and they've sort of thought about all of those things and created these systems to address a lot of the things that you're talking about. But, I mean, certainly we can, we can look at a program like that, and we can look at other things too. It's just, you have to go through that process of getting it approved and doing things that you might not expect that you had to do as part of that.
Oh, with, with that type, sorry.
Well, I mean, my, my only concern with something like that, I mean, and always great ideas, if we can, if we can look at ways to help those who need the help, that's great. But it's always a factor of scale. You know, when you're looking at, you know, City of Madison, they have an enormous staff. They have a very large water utility staff and billing staff. And, you know, when you look at, I mean, my wife was a social, was a social worker early in our careers, and she worked for a program that helped with heat and, and gas and electricity reimbursements. They had a whole time staff that had to evaluate and, evaluate and approve income levels. And you have to look through documentation, you have to go through all of that, you have to administer the distribution of it. And, and I just would worry that that would be, by the time you look at the costs of doing something like that, might exceed the cost that would be dispersed through a program like that. That's, it's just when, when you're, it's like looking at, you know, we would love to have, and we were looking at public transportation, right, we're looking at that, but we understand there's a scale factor in, in dealing with, we can't have bus systems and, and light rail and everything, just because we just don't have the population that can support that type of thing.
All right, yeah, Derek?
So, just to kind of piggyback on Phil, I agree that this is a discussion for another day. But I, you know, I understand what Jeff is saying as far as scale and ability of staff to administer it, but I think it is probably something that we should at least look at in the future. Just to try and kind of balance it out to see if maybe there is a way, a simplified way that we can make this achievable.
So, so we do have a, a motion, a second on the table. All right, yeah.
I just wanted to speak to that. I really appreciated both Matt and Martin's comments in regards to that motion, and I know I seconded it. But I think we should not go forward with that, so.
Candy, can you, do you mind reading it back to us?
So I have motion moved, seconded by Jacobson, to ask Ellers for additional information, and I just bullet pointed it. So, flat rate for residential, flat rate and multi, flat rate for residential and multifamily for comparables, declining rate for non-residential, and ask the PSC what other community, municipalities charge, if I could speak, that would be one.
Okay. All right, so we need.
No, I can withdraw.
Oh, yes, you may.
Well, it belongs, it belongs to the whole board, so.
I can't withdraw the motion?
No.
You all have to agree to withdraw it.
So unanimous consent?
Yep.
That the motion can be withdrawn?
We can just vote and then vote it down.
Yeah.
You know, it's that's what happens.
Well, I, I have some frustrations right now, and one of the frustrations is that those concerns are still there. And I'm not convinced that we're dealing with them, because they're inconvenient. And they cause more work for us, and so I have a concern about that and a frustration about it. And I'm just got to say that, and I'm willing to pull the motion back.
All right, should we vote?
Should, to pull it back, or allowed to?
Well, we have a motion.
We have a motion and a second, you might as well just vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, ready? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
No.
No.
So I had, I had two yeses, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion failed.
All right. Now where do we want to go?
What's presented?
You want to go what's presented, Phil?
I move to approve as presented.
Okay, and Amanda, second, okay. Discussion. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
So that was one, two no's? Motion carries.
Okay. Let's go to eight, eight B, continue here. Continue review of discussion questions related to 2023 comprehensive plan and comprehensive outdoor recreation plan projects. Elise, is that you?
Thanks, Randy. So, quick update on our public participation process for the comp plan and the park plan. We are off to the races. Last Tuesday, we had our focus group meeting, thanks to those that attended, we had a lot of really good conversations. We also, the next day, Wednesday, March 1st, opened up our park survey. It's available online, Leanne created some nice posters for that, we didn't have that ready for the packet, but those are available on the table there, if anyone would like to grab them and distribute them around town. It's also up on our website, there's a banner on the top that Candy's made, it's just a website where all the information and dates are saved. So, that survey, we have, as of noon today, 280 responses so far in about five days. So really happy to see that, and please continue to share, that'll be open until March 22nd. And then we also have a public kickoff event for our comp plan, so an open house, it'll be here this Thursday, March 9th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It'll be similar format to the 249 North Main workshop that we did last summer, but obviously focused on the village as a whole, but a lot of like land use questions, maps drawn, sticky notes, all that fun stuff. So, please attend and share that information with folks that will be interested. And then we'll kind of move into more of the drafting process and having some of those drafts come through later spring and summer to be reviewed at the planning commission and the board. One thing I wanted to come back to, so Sonia Kreisel from Bandwell was here at our joint meeting in early February and presented a lot of demographic information and trends, and then she had some questions, and I know a few of you commented that you wanted some time to digest these and would reach out with some thoughts. I heard from a couple of you, but I just wanted to bring these up again and jump maybe to the next slide, questions two and three here. But I did this at our planning commission meeting last week too, and it was helpful, just giving a few more thoughts. I really want to make sure that any high-level goals or points or questions that you guys have are addressed early on in the process. It's much easier to incorporate those before they get into the drafting stage. But these questions again are more about what are most pressing issues that we need to address? And then opportunities or trends that we should aim to take advantage of over the next decade? So, we can sit on these questions for a little bit and then move down to one or two more, and then we can get on with the agenda. But just wanted to make sure we had some time to capture thoughts before we keep moving through the process.
Yep, Carleen?
So, on question two, I have, we definitely need to extend, expand our tax base to, in order to maintain even the services that we have now and to, and for the increased residential the growth that's happening. I think preserving the small-town character, especially in the downtown area, and maybe requiring, or I guess not requiring, but encouraging any new building that happens down here to, to kind of stay within the, the character that has been upgraded. You know, a lot of the refacing of buildings and things during the pandemic really added a lot. Attracting more diverse populations to our community, and some of that having to do with transportation and affordable housing options. And then making sure that the growth that happens, happens in a sustainable way. And I think one of the, you know, we, we are so close to Madison, and we are on a route that is convenient for a lot of people who work at Epic and some of the other large employers in the region. Even though we don't have large employers here, it makes us convenient for lots of folks. So I think whatever we can do to take advantage of that is, is in our best interest.
So, so I'm just going to echo one, one of the things that Carleen said about the downtown and, because I, I hear and I worry about it as well, about the, you know, libraries moving, the post offices moving, about maintaining that character that we have. And I hear often from others, people wish they, they have, would have what we have in terms of the downtown. And so I, I, I hope we continue to, to keep that, because I think that's one of the draws to the village. Yeah, Derek?
Just to kind of echo on that, it's not only the existing downtown, but I think the downtown area, there should be some expansion there. And how it's set up, I think that there's a few opportunities, both on South Main Street and probably Janesville Street, where there could be some redevelopment that takes place. But it all kind of comes back to, like Carleen was saying, expanding that tax base. I think one of the most pressing issues that kind of need to be addressed here is, and I know historically it's been talked about for 30 years, but I'll say it again, the Highway 138, crossing over there and creating some space in that direction to attract not only the businesses, but also additional housing to the area.
Okay, yeah, Mike?
I've got to, got to agree with, we need to grow our tax base. It's becoming, what we're expecting of our citizens over the next few years is unsustainable. I think one of the things, though, that we need to look at is how we're growing new tax base. So over the last 10 years, the city has absorbed a lot of land into our, into our service area. That has come with a lot of buried costs that we will have to assume to maintain the sewer systems, the water systems. And certainly continuing a growth pattern of leaning heavily on single-family homes and large lots is frankly fiscally irresponsible if we want to keep the taxes down on our citizens. And second is I think we really need to address and do our part to deal with climate change.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, Amanda?
Yes, you can put a tick mark by just about everything people said here. For me, I agree with that. I was just going to add also, and while this, this is not super pressing, but I'm going to put it out there because I think we need to think about it. Cannabis legalization may happen. It probably won't happen in the next year or two, but I feel like it's coming, and I want us to be ready when it does. I want us to have a plan, so.
Municipal pot farm?
No, not that, but, but, you know, a, a, a policy, you know, we, we need to talk about it before it happens as opposed to reacting to it, and oh my gosh, this thing happened, and now what do we do? I just want to be proactive on that end. The other thing I would add is flooding issues, water, just whatever we can do to make sure that new growth that we have is not going to shift water issues into other places or create problems elsewhere. Just really being cognizant of the high water table and our low elevation. And that's about it.
Yeah, Jenna?
I echo what a lot of folks said, but I just, in addition to the water issues that Amanda just mentioned, I also wanted to specifically call out when we talk about growing our tax base, more spaces for commercial. I know there's, we just don't have a lot of buildings for cities. We don't have a lot of buildings for, for businesses to come to, or spaces that people could build a commercial area. So, you know, as you talk about potentially, you know, opportunities in the downtown or just really anywhere throughout the village.
Okay. Elise, you've got a couple more?
Yeah, kind of covered the, the third question. Other than downtown and kind of expanding downtown, I know Derek mentioned a little bit, are there any areas that you want to see the comp plan really focus on change in land use or focus on redevelopment? Some that were mentioned at the planning commission meeting were kind of Market Street behind Hy-Vee, around the Dorn Hardware site project. I believe Bur Oak was mentioned as well, and also kind of the southern section of Market Street between Netherwood and Grove. But other areas that you would like to see investment or focus on business opportunities?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so when I look at this picture of, on the bottom right, I can't help but notice how much pavement there is right down in the very heart of downtown. If there were ways, as we look at particularly parking, the, the area there, the municipal lot by Triangle Park. I mean, I honestly, I would love to see parking elsewhere and that reintegrated into soil and grass and, and a bigger park in the, in the center of our downtown. And since we don't know, like, what's going to happen with this building, down the line or other things, anything that we could do to bring more grass and trees into downtown, I think is a, is a, is a good thing. But in particular, I like that idea.
Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, to follow up on that, I'm not sure I agree with the park there. I'm a long time thought it would be great for, for mixed-use development and businesses on the ground floor. But the crux of the matter is, is I think we really need to address parking in the downtown and centralizing parking more and looking at, you know, maybe using the senior center as an opportunity to create a parking structure in downtown, so that we can look at redeveloping some of our parking lots into useful commercial and residential spaces. Certainly jumping Highway 14 is a big deal for us and would present a lot of opportunities for the village. Reducing lot sizes and setbacks would allow for denser and lower cost development, and I think would, would benefit not only homeowners and renters, but actually the developers as well. I'd like to see us commit to a net zero for the village to, to really analyze when we think we can get to it and, and put a stake in the ground that we're going to get there. And lastly, it's probably a surprise to no one in the room, I'd like to see less development on TIDS or less emphasis on TIDS for development, and a more of a focus on how we support and grow our local businesses and use government to, to support the businesses that we have.
Okay, and then lastly, the vision question, or how I worded this to the planning commission is, when you close your eyes and think about Oregon in 10 to 20 years, what are some words or images that come to mind?
Yeah, Amanda?
I'd like to see some, some destinations. Right now, we have businesses, we have restaurants, but, but Oregon doesn't have the attractions that would make us a destination city. Because when you have that attraction to bring people to Oregon, then that means they, a lot of times people stay and spend money, and that helps our economy. I don't necessarily know what that looks like, I know there are things that, ideas that are being tossed around. You know, Sculpture Garden's one of them, but there's other, other things that we could have. We need to attract a business or create an attraction of some sort that would have people come here to do something and to stay here.
I heard Disney was thinking about Will be.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Epic might expand it this way.
Along, along that point, I think, um, uh, the word destination really comes out to me and thinking about, you know, we have Summer Fest, we just had Winter Fest, could we start doing more event-type things that bring people to our community, you know, like a line walk, something along those lines that really invites people to come, see how great this community is and all that we have to offer and enjoy their time here and then kind of highlight those. So I would hope in like ten to twenty years, hopefully ten years, people think of us and they think of, oh, that's a great place to go, hang out for the day.
How about an art fair, Jenna?
That'd sound great.
Carleen?
Um, I would like to see more people of color and disabled people and other people on a regular basis, not just one or two, but large numbers of people who look different than, than white people. I mean, I have nothing against white people, I'm white, but I'd like to see more people of color in this, in this village and not think it's unusual.
Yeah, Derek?
So, I, you know, like all the ideas I've heard so far, but I guess when I close my eyes and kind of think of going forward, um, businesses and housing to support those businesses, when I look at the last thirty-some-odd years in the village, one of the largest employers has either been the grocery store or Wisco or something like that. I would like to see an employer, anchor employer. I mean, obviously, it's not gonna be like an Epic per se, but some sort of large anchor employer with a, with the housing to be able to support the workforce that is there. And honestly, as part of that, I'd like to see some increase in senior housing because our population is getting older. I know a lot of people that have been here a long time, um, that once they can't climb the steps in their house anymore, have no place else to go. And there's only so many places at Rolling Meadows. So I guess when I close my eyes, that's kind of more what, where my focus would lie.
All right.
Okay.
You got it?
Yep, thank you for your time and feedback, appreciate it.
All right, let's go to nine, which is new business. Items offered discussion, possible action. A is introduction, resolution number twenty-three oh four, resolution to vacate and discontinue a portion of Maryhill Drive, staff recommendation, uh, motion to, to schedule public hearing on the resolution for the April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three village board meeting and refer the matter to, for consideration and report to the planning commission. Motion, Derek? And Mike, your question? Your second. Okay, second, okay. Any discussion on this? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, nine B, revisions to the Oregon Police Department, uh, use of force, policy to include less lethal procedures in equipment and authorize purchase of equipment in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Staff recommendation is to approve as presented. Phil and Carleen, motions, any discussion? Yeah, you, go ahead.
Really, just a question for the chief. Uh, as far as the policy goes, um, does this policy follow our officers? Say, if you're called to Madison, does something kind of stuck out to me is, um, in regards to crowd, crowd control? Um, so does that bit of the policy follow your officers or are they following whatever municipality?
So, our, our pol- our policy follows our officers, absolutely. In fact, um, part of the revisions and the policy cover, if we're mutually aided, if this all goes through, we're mutually aided, let's say by Fitchford PD, and we end up using this less lethal launcher, we would then reflect, we would verbally say to them, per our policy, we aren't to take this person to the hospital, they've been hit by this projectile. And then it's on them, we can't force them to, when we start, we can't take them to the hospital, but that's what we do most of the time.
Good. Just on a side note, totally supporting of the less-than-lethal options, how does, does that inter- enter, I know your, your sidearm interacts with your body camera, do those less-lethal options, is that, uh, the, does that follow the system or you have to, like, tap a button on your vest to get that to work or?
No, so the signal sidearm, which is on the holster, um, that's only for the hand gun.
Right.
And so that's specific to a, a holster. Um, with this, these really will be told when the time exists for it to happen. And unless there's some sort of elec- electrical error with the camera itself or the officer is injured and can't hit the button on their, their chest, the camera should be on, uh, because they're already in contact. Um, and, uh, Randy, if it's okay, I, if you mind if I just explain a little bit?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So, it's just a backup. Um, I want to stress that our officers are trained, that our first course of action with any sort of conflict or disturbance is to come in and try to verbally engage in a conversation. Our best tools are conversating. Uh, but unfortunately, sometimes the stack is, the deck is stacked against us. Um, so I, I want to stress that, you know, we're committed to resolving conflicts through the communication skills, crisis intervention, de-escalation tactics. Um, we've, I've done a lot of research on what's the best option. Uh, we are one of the few agencies of our size that doesn't already have a less lethal option. Uh, most agencies in Dane County have what they call a beanbag shotgun. Reason they have that is that in the time was more affordable. Um, they would take shotguns that used to be in the fleet as a just a standard firearm shotgun and, um, modify them to then become a beanbag shotgun. Uh, they're very effective, um, but as time has gone on, Madison PD tested out, when I'm presented to this board, as the defense technology less lethal impact projectile, forty millimeter tactical signal launcher. Sorry, it's a long one. Um, and, uh, I did include a YouTube video in case you wanted to watch them demonstrate, uh, shooting it. They had, um, a perfect situation of where they saw success. Uh, but the reason I wanted to go in a little bit more detail is to, to point out too that the projectiles that shoot out of this, and I apologize, there's two errors in my policy that I, I caught as we were in this meeting. Two on page eighteen. First, it's an orange-colored barrel, not stock. Technically, it's stock's orange as well, but it's covered by, uh, a case that folds around, but the barrel itself is orange. How this works is that there's a lever about in the middle of the launcher and it actually bends, you put the round in. Uh, the rounds are a sponge foam tipped and, um, what we're looking to do is equip each launcher, so as we buy it, that's what it would look like. Now, we, we're, we want to equip them with a red dot, uh, sight, because, you know, this is shooting at a high velocity. We want to make sure if we do have to deploy this at a subject, we hit that person and that person only. Uh, one of the biggest differences between the beanbag shotgun and this is this is far more accurate. Um, and it can be slightly less damaging to the person that it is being struck with it. Um, to cover a few other things, uh, purchasing the equipment, so where are we gonna get the money for this? What we would do if the board approves is purchase two of these launchers with the two red dot sights, uh, three locking mechanisms that would be installed in three of the squads, Y three versus two, in case we have a squad go down, we can transition that second launcher to a, a different squad. Uh, we talked about getting an additional lock for another squad. They almost are more expensive than the launchers themselves. Um, and we don't know as Ford continues to make these vehicles, if the, the structure has changed. So we just don't want to put all rates in one basket there. Um, the money we would take from the four, fourteen funds available, uh, and then this would be from squads and equipment sold in prior years. Uh, for training, um, we would send one of our certified instructors, a very qualified officer, um, to become an instructor in this, specifically provided by the company that makes this exact, uh, weapon. And per policy, we would have to do this training at least once every two years at a minimum. Um, so there's policy revisions, essentially, it's just a whole new section and I'll, I will do that briefly. Uh, but, um, Jeff just handed up what that, what that looks like. Um, skip to the policies here.
Just to the red part, right?
Uh-huh.
Just to the red part, is that right?
Yes, yes. So, just to cover, um, quick, the use of this would be authorized if the subject's behavior poses a threat of significant physical harm. Now, we leave that broad because that physical harm could be referred to someone else or to themselves. But this will decentralize them and allow officers hopefully approach this person safely and, and, uh, help them become no longer a threat. Uh, again, the training would be, uh, once every two years. Uh, the policy does discuss how this launcher would be stored, if you have any answering questions on that. Um, the deployment, uh, the use of force in these situations is very dynamic. Um, and whenever the officers can do so, whether it's the time or the officer or the supervisor's availability, uh, we are asking that they try to get authorization before they deploy this, uh, tool. Uh, but absent any imminent, and I, I tried to cover crowd control, I know Derek, you covered that, uh, you asked a little bit about that, uh, absent any imminent risk of harm to officers or community members, impact projectiles will not be used in crowd control situations. I wanted to make sure I was covering, in case, uh, questions reverting that. Um-
Chief?
In our half-party, you want me to get into this, but the primary target areas for this, this weapon are the thighs, lower legs, calves, the buttocks. Secondary would be the abdomen. And then if the policy does cover what areas should be avoided at all costs and will be considered lethal force.
Chief, Chief Matt, Matt, you have a question, Matt?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Clarification.
Chief, your, the text there that has the bolded first sentence?
Yes.
So, um, as I'm reading that, person wouldn't, the officer would not be permitted to use that less lethal impact projectile unless there's another officer there who is in fact providing cover with-
Correct. So let me give an example. An individual who is an imminent threat to another, whether it's themselves or another.
Yep.
The last thing you want is one officer walking up and deploying this launcher. Because if they miss, or if it's ineffective in some way, that officer is now putting themselves in significant harm's way. So-
They don't have that other officer there?
Correct.
Then they have to go to more lethal?
Correct. And they should already be there.
Okay.
Yeah. So an example of this, just to put it, um, a different way, and I, I don't know if any of you watched the video, but this would be a perfect way to describe it. Um, Madison PD responded to, an individual was suicidal, that was armed with a knife and was stabbing themselves in the neck. The officer is not, i- it's gonna take lethal force right away, because they want to make sure that person then doesn't turn the knife on someone else. Maybe there's someone who was by, maybe there's somebody behind them that the officer's unaware of. They're gonna take that lethal, uh, force option out in case it's needed. The secondary officer or a third officer on scene, if timing, if time exists and distance exists, then this is where this tool would be brought out as a possibility. This, you know, and as this is stressed several times in our, this policy, that this cannot substitute lethal force. So as far as, uh, the policy also does cover on page nineteen, um, unless exigent circumstances are present, uh, the types of individuals that we should not be deploying this type of tool at. Um, and I won't read through all of them, but I think they're pretty obvious. Uh, covers how to collect the evidence if these are deployed, and then the requirement for medical treatment. Um, and then the reporting when we use that tool. I'm happy to take any questions?
All right, I saw Amanda's and then Mike.
Uh, so just a quick thing, um, you and I talked a little bit about this, um, that Madison incident resolved okay, right? Like, that was-
Yes. So what happened in that situation was, um, the ma- after enough officers were on scene and they were able to safely deploy this weapon, uh, they did shoot the individual, I thought at about a hundred feet, um, in the abdomen, they put him down, and then officers ran up and were able to put clotting material on the neck and they saved his life.
Okay. And my next question was range, which I think you just answered. I was curious what kind of range, uh-
Yes, it's between five feet and a hundred and thirty, if I recall correctly.
Okay, that's pretty decent.
Okay, Mike?
Thanks.
Yeah, just a couple questions. So we have, with the police force in Oregon, I believe, several less lethal options currently, baton, um, electronic devices. Um, is this filling a gap because it's a longer range or how does, how does this interact with our capabilities already?
Yep. Each one of those tools has its limitations. First of all, baton, um, I've been doing this job for twenty years and I've never used my baton other than to put down a animal with rabies that was coming after me. Um, that's your very close proximity threat. Uh, a taser has its own list of challenges. First of all, Wisconsin, we wear thick clothing a lot of the times, we have to do, that is a challenge. If one of those, um, probes do not go through that jacket, it's not gonna connect and it's not gonna be effective. Secondly, as you shoot out a taser, as it leaves that device, the probe will go like this. It's very easy because people are running at you, people are moving fast, that one of those probes misses and it's ineffective. This is a tool that you can shoot from a very long distance, then it's very effective. But they come with their con- their pros too, right? So, baton, I don't even wear, I'll be honest with you. Um, I think some of our officers wear it, so I just want to leave that one to the side. The taser, we wear on us all the time. So if that threat presents itself, we're on, while we're on just the standard call, we have that on our body to help keep us safe and to help control a situation that's out of control and unsafe. Um, a less lethal, that's not on us, but that is an option that if time and distance is there and all the variables exist for that to be safely deployed, then that's an option. So it just depends on the circumstances, the environment, the situation that we have in front of us.
So, one thing that, that kind of struck me, um, when I was reading this, is it's got a range of five to, I think, a hundred and thirty-one feet. Um, and it looks like, I assume functions like a shotgun, and I've, you know, used shotguns extensively in my life and, and they're not terribly accurate at longer distances. This is essentially a lethal weapon, depending on where it hits the body. Uh, I mean, if it hits someone in the head, I assume it's, it's pretty traumatic for the individual. Um, is there gonna be limitations on range or am I underestimating how accurate this thing is or?
So first of all, if you haven't watched YouTube video, I would highly recommend it. Um, number one, that's why we do the training and that's why the training is, it has to be well done and that's why we pick the instructor we have. Um, secondly, this is by far the most accurate less lethal weapon we've come across in all of our research. Thirdly, we, we're putting on that sight that is, in hopes to even make that much more, um, accurate. But in talking with, uh, the Madison Training Center supervisor over there, he said that they have had tremendous success with it. Um, not only in the field but in training as well. And I, I think out of the, I think they've had it now for about five years, if not a little bit longer, I think they've only had one, one officer have an issue with not hitting the target. That to me, so tells me it's very impactful. Um, and that's why it's just so important to continue with the training. That's why we built that into this policy as well, is just making sure that they have proficient in this weapon.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, there's a motion, the second on the table. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, so we'll go to, to nine C, five-year contract for the purchase of police department tasers and related, this looks like a Jeff Rock word, a pertinence, did I say that right? With Axon Enterprise Incorporated. Recommendation is to approve as presented. Chief, do you sit, need to say anything on that or the-
Just being real quick, um, the taser sevens are, uh, the newest addition, uh, not the newest, there's one more above this, but that's a taser ten, but this is, right now- But this is, right now, what most agencies are moving to, the tasers we currently carry, um, are now outdated, they're not making them anymore. So, they're moving to this. Tell you the biggest difference with the Taser seven is, and I explained a little bit, all these tasers operate. Uh, right now, the Taser we carry shoots out one red dot, and then that red dot is where we are trained to aim, and then those two prongs come out, but they don't come out as if that dot is exactly where it's gonna hit. The Taser seven fixes that. So, those two prongs, those two dots are gonna be where those two prongs go, and it provides somewhat accuracy. Uh, another difference to the Taser sevens is, is there is a function, um, within the, the weapon that allows for a long-distance deployment versus short-distance deployment. Uh, all of our trainers that are, uh, trained through Taser will go through this training with all of these changes and be able to, um, provide high, high quality training as we move into the Taser seven.
Okay, so we need, we, should we get a motion, the second first, and after any other discussion? Amanda's making a motion, and Jenna, any other discussion on this? Questions for the chief? Okay, see none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, thank you. Okay, nine D is, uh, review and consider bids for twenty twenty-three street utility improvements project for State Street, Washington Street, and Janesville Street, and MM. Jeff, is that what you, um?
Yeah, I'll have Lauren, uh, Lauren come up and talk about this.
Sure.
Cause she's been working with Town and Country on this, and bids, bids were opened and they were high. So, I'll let her take it from there and kind of what our plan is going forward.
Yeah, so, um, Jeff kinda got it and won. We did open bids on Thursday and, uh, we were optimistic and quickly became less so. Uh, they came back about forty percent higher than the estimate of two point three two million that we were expecting. So, yeah, this, this was not a great Thursday afternoon. Um, we took a look through the bids with Town and Country, our engineer, and quickly got on the phone with, um, both of the bidders. We only had two, which is, I think, part of the issue and not something that we like to see, especially with a project of this size and of this type. It is a big project, but it is not terribly specialized work, this is something that a lot of contractors can do. So, we did speak with both of them, um, both of the, both of the bidders, and they both indicated that there were a couple of different items that caused them a little bit of concern that weren't terribly clear in the bidding documents, um, both of which we thought were something that we could address relatively easily, both by adding in what we call alternate bid items, so, um, items that the contractors can kinda give us a price with and without certain conditions met. There were also some issues like groundwater that we were able to take a look at and do some, a little bit of additional site investigation to hopefully try to answer those questions. So, all in all, once we had a chance to speak to the bidders, um, as well as to some contractors that did not bid on this, and discuss schedule with them and kind of how they saw the next month of bidding going, we all came to an internal conclusion that the best course going forward would be for us to rework that bid form, pull out some of those items that caused a little bit of confusion or consternation on the part of bidders, clarify some of our items, and then put this back out to bid starting Thursday for a week, or a period of two weeks, instead of the three weeks we had it before, because it has been out in the world and people are familiar with it. And then to kind of aggressively reach out to contractors that we know and prod them to take a look at this and, and try to drum up a little bit more interest in a way that we didn't do quite as aggressively this last time around. So, we're optimistic that, um, although some communities have been getting these projects out, we are still ahead of other communities in this area, so we're optimistic that people will still be interested in this project and that hopefully we can get some better prices. Um, and also just, we and the contractor come to a better understanding of what's going on. One of the silver linings to this is that clearly there was some confusion and a disconnect, and hopefully we've hammered all of that out now and there will be fewer surprises in the field, which is in many ways far worse than figuring this stuff out before you've signed a contract. So, um, so we are optimistic that this is the right path forward and we'd be looking at opening this next round of bids later in March here.
So, what we're asking, what we're asking is you to reject the bids.
Yep.
A motion to?
You have a motion to reject the bids, and then second, you'll need a motion to authorize us to go out to bid again on that. Um, and then the other thing that just, just to be made aware of, um, one of the, one of the big price impacts to the project from the contractors was, they alluded to the fact that they were having to work in a active street environment in Janesville Street. Um, so we are actually going to allow them to, and, and Dane County was gonna shut down Janesville anyway. Uh, we were hoping to keep it open during the utility installation. Um, we think we can do a significant cost savings, I mean, we're talking hopefully several hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred thousand dollars, give or take.
That would, if we were to allow the street to be closed. It'll still be open to local traffic, so people can get to their homes and everything like that, but it won't be, um, two-way traffic like, uh, we were hoping it would be.
So, we could do a motion to reject and to rebid, all in one?
Nope, you have to do, I think, I would do it, two.
Two sounds good to me.
Two, all right. All right, can we have a motion to?
To reject.
Reject the current bid, okay, Phil, and then Amanda, do you have a comment?
So, yeah, by me.
Carleen, second, okay, all right, go ahead, Amanda.
Yeah, and I apologize, I, I had to go to the bathroom, so, if you answered this already, I just.
It's quite all right.
Um, is the, uh, is, uh, is this project still gonna be on track for the summer then, even with this rebid, or is that?
We hope, yes.
You're still hoping, okay.
This rebid process does not throw it off schedule, so if anything were to come up down the line, possibly, but we would still be opening bids, like I said, in late March, so with plenty of time to get contracts in place at the schedule we had already set.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so the motion in a second is to reject the current bid. We'll take care of that first. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed, and then we need a motion to rebid it. Yep, yep, Carleen and Jenna, okay, any discussion?
Question?
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Phil.
What are the chances of knocking off forty percent?
I would say they're not high.
Yeah.
Um, somewhere be- well, nope, I'm not even gonna quantify that.
Yeah.
Um, that said, like Jeff said, there are a couple of areas that we think are low-hanging fruit. Um, our engineer has also been working through a re-estimate, clearly, they, they undershot, I will say. And so, they are reworking it to figure out exactly what might be a realistic number. And part of our kind of process that we're going through now is not only identifying, it would be great if there were six hundred thousand dollars worth of confusion in traffic control, but that's not realistic. So, what we're doing is kind of pulling out work that may be postponable or lumped into future projects and listing that as alternate bid items. So, kind of prioritizing the different things that we really need versus what might be nice but could be doable later without looking silly and tearing up a brand-new street. And so, hopefully, we'll be able to kind of cut down that scope further without lopping off streets or something.
Thank you.
If we increase the estimate, it makes us closer to the bid, you know that?
Yeah.
This is true.
Mathematically, I haven't figured that one out yet.
You can lie with statistics any way you like.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to rebid. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, okay, all right, Lauren.
Thank you.
She's, might as well stay there for this one here.
Yeah, the next one is yours too. So, E is proposed task, uh, task order, uh, for update, updating the water system master plan. Rupert and Milky incorporate an amount of twenty thousand twenty-two hundred dollars, twenty thousand two hundred dollars.
It's a hard one to say, yeah.
Yep.
Do you want, would you like me to just speak really briefly about it?
Well, what is the board thinking? All right, Phil?
Yep, that's fine.
Give a second, Derek? Okay, any discussion, any questions for Lauren? See none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, perfect, thank you, Lauren. F is proposed twenty twenty-three preliminary debt plan for capital projects and equipment. Staff recommendation, motion to direct staff proceed with the borrowing process with the items and funding presented. Martin, is this you?
Yeah, I'll take this.
Okay.
So, we're at the part of the year where we, uh, borrow for projects and equipment that were, was in the twenty twenty-three budget. And, um, so at this stage of the process, we're just trying to figure out, um, what money we have on hand and what projects that we wanna move forward with that were, were in the budget, and so, um, this is an opportunity for the board to, to look at where we're at with things and then to make sure that we keep proceeding along, uh, in this process. So, um, as you can see in the packet, in the preliminary debt plan schedule, uh, you can see all the items that were included in the twenty twenty budget listed there. Um, anything that's been highlighted in yellow has some kind of change that's occurred to it since you probably last saw it in the budget process. And that could be anything from a lower cost than estimated, which there were a couple of them. Um, some higher costs than were estimated as well. A couple of projects that we've talked about at the village board level, um, that weren't in the, the plan but have been addressed and now need to be included. Um, there's some things where we've identified that there are some funds available, either through, um, unspent projects, previous projects, unspent borrowing, um, in previous years, sale of, um, some surplus equipment. Um, so things that we could put towards some of these smaller cost items that we're proposing here. Um, there's also a couple of things that have been completed already, just for a variety of different reasons. Um, two big things, actually three things that I wanna just draw attention to is the J.C. Park project. We had, uh, to do the project, phase two of the project this year for two point five million dollars. We're actually proposing to postpone phase two. Um, we're still doing a lot of work with phase one this year, including building the concession stand. We also run into some things that we've discussed at this level with the phase one project. We had to remove quite a bit of underground debris that was buried in there, which caused some great cost increases to that part of the project. Most likely, we are going to propose some additional borrowing for phase one. Right now, we have placeholder of two hundred and fifty thousand.
It won't, yeah, I've just, I've been looking at that, it won't be that much.
Okay.
If any, yes.
So, we're, we're still looking at expenditures and, uh, funds that are available to offset some of those things. Uh, but just to put that, uh, on your mind as we, as we move forward. So, that's one big thing to, to look at, and if there's any feedback, please give that. Uh, the other thing I wanna draw attention to is the Village Hall renovation. Again, um, we, we've encountered some increases for furniture, some equipment, some of that inflationary stuff that we've seen across a lot of projects. Uh, we have a placeholder there for a hundred and fifty thousand in additional borrowing. Again, I think we're still reviewing that.
That's looking good too.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
So, we just wanna make sure that that's, you're aware of that. This will come back before you, at least a couple more times before we actually make the final, this is what we're borrowing for. Uh, but we're still working on that. And then the last thing I wanted to draw attention to was the use of, um, cash for the utility items. Um, so as we kinda talked about earlier with the rate study, uh, the same applies for the sewer utility in that we have quite a bit of cash on hand in both of those utilities. And so, we think this is an opportunity, uh, this year to use some of that cash for some of this one-time, uh, purchases rather than go through the borrowing process and incur borrowing costs, interest costs, that sort of thing. Um, again, it's, you know, it may be beneficial, you know, in the short term to helping our rates. Um, but again, it's just one-time cash, so there's no guarantee that that cash is gonna come back. So, um, using it on these projects is a good use of those funds. Um, I think the wild card too is what we found out with, um, the street, for the street project, Janesville Street. Um, obviously, we don't know what the cost for that will be quite yet. Um, depending on where those come back, that might kind of change the equation of what we're thinking in terms of, uh, revenue bonds for the utilities. But for now, um, looking at using cash for those things. So, if there's any, um, questions or feedback on what we have here, again, we just kinda wanna get a sense from the board that we're on the right track here, if there's something major that needs to be pulled out, added in, um, this would be a good time to do that. And then we're gonna proceed, I think the next step is obviously we wanna firm up some of these numbers. We wanna get the bid back at the end of the month for the street project. Um, and then I think we're gonna start talking with the others on what are the best instruments to use for debt obligations, or what should we use? Um, and then that will be back before the board for more review and discussion.
Yeah, um, good job, I mean, you're losing a sixth of our borrowing for the year, which I'm sure our taxpayers are gonna love. Um, question that I have for you is the stormwater master plan disappears and is not, there's no indication of it being scheduled, rescheduled, what's that mean?
Yeah, I've, actually, I have that scheduled, uh, still a few years out. Um, it's not taken away, it's not something that we're not going to update. It's just when we're looking at where we can cut. Um, the, the fact of the matter is, is we just came through probably three out of the heaviest rainfall years in like, anyone, depends on who you say, hundred to two hundred and fifty-year, uh, occurrences. Um, and we had zero first-floor damage or flooding within the village. And so, um, and, and I think, you know, Oregon gets kind of a bad rap because of some of its history on flooding. But the village board stepped in and bought houses, I mean, seven, eight, nine houses and moved those out of the, out of the flood plain. Um, has done great improvements to Keller Alpine area, as well as the Bergamot ponds and everything. Um, tightened up those a lot. And we really, even though, even then when we had the rain on snow event, or the rain on ice event about a week and a half ago, you saw, you get zero infiltration during those events, and those are actually sometimes your worst stormwater events. We had a lot of water out in the ponds, but we did not have a single flooding incident. Uh, now, if we got a cross-plains event in the downtown area, um, we'd be, we'd be sitting in about six or eight feet of water here. Um, but, so, I, I just was looking, it's not that I wanna lower the priority on it, it's just we wanna, and we're looking at what kind of things can we cut out for now, that was one of the things that we decided.
No, I appreciate that, I mean, the more we can defer in costs, the better, so thank you.
Anybody else from Martin? Okay, so, Martin's looking for a, a motion to direct staff proceed with the borrowing process. The items and funding presented to us tonight, somebody wanna make a motion? Carleen and Jenna, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, thank you. We're on to G, which is future agenda items. This item gives the board members opportunity. Oh, did I miss you?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm waiting for future.
Oh, all right.
You struggled to see me, so I'm.
Well, you gotta wait, Carleen, Carleen beat you to it, so you'll. So, this item gives the board members opportunity to place items, uh, uh, and new business on a future agenda for discussion. So, Carleen, and then Derek.
So, uh, the diversity, equity, and inclusion committee has been working on a mission statement, and thank you, uh, Martin, for sending over the ordinance that created the committee. Um, and we're not quite done with it, but we, we expect to be finished by the next meeting and would like to be able to present, and I will not be the person presenting the statement. It'll be one of the other committee members, we just would like to put that on. Um, and then I suspect we'll have some discussion about it and questions.
All right, Derek, you're on.
Uh, so for a future agenda item, the Fire and EMS district had a little bit of a change with the building committee. Um, some of our municipal partners had decided that they would like an alternate in case someone wa- isn't able to make the meetings, and it was kinda recommended that the rest of the municipal partners do as well, so, is where I'm sitting on that committee. Um, they're looking for an alternate, so we should probably have a nomination for that at a future board meeting. And then just to kinda piggyback off of our conversation earlier this evening in regards to the water utility rate, I guess I'd like to, um, see for a future meeting, a discussion on a program to offset some cost for lower-income individuals. discussion on a program to offset some costs for lower-income individuals on our water utility program and what that would kind of look like, and Martin, I'll email you kind of my thoughts on that.
All right. All right. Yeah, Amanda?
Uh, so, the, the mowing policy that was brought up by the public comments, that is going to be next?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'll talk about that during the, ten, ten C.
I'll just say that right now, the, the process that's being handled for that is, it was referred to the Public Works Committee. Public Works Committee had a couple of meetings on it before the forums.
Yep.
And the forums took place, and now, the proposal, the staff proposal is going to the committee in this month.
On the twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
Five o'clock.
And then, the committee will make a referral to the board.
Okay, so, we, we don't really have to do anything that will come before us anyway at some point?
No.
It, it will come to you guys, yep.
Okay, all right, thanks, that's good.
Okay, anybody else? Future agenda items, all right? All right, we can go to ten. Report of village officers, village administrative report, Martin had it in the packet for our view. Ten B, Assistant Director Public Works report regarding applications for congressionally-directed spending toward the North Oak Street reconstruction and utility replacement project and the wastewater treatment plant improvements project. Lauren?
I'm back, sorry. So, I'm going to make this very brief. I think that most of what needs to be covered about the meat of these applications is in here, but I did want to take a minute, because these had to come together so quickly, I wrote this memo before actually submitting both of them. I wanted to thank the other community organizations and agencies that were willing to sign and in some cases, edit letters of support for these projects, including Randy, Andy Wyland with the Oregon School District, Tanner with the Chamber of Commerce, and I apologize, I'm going to get them wrong, but Chief Peggencott with the Police Department, and Chief Linsmire with the Fire District, as well as Oregon Youth Softball for North Oak Street. In addition, on the wastewater treatment plant, we also got letters from the Oregon Nature Alliance, the Friends of Badfish Creek Watershed, the Rock River Coalition, and even the Rock County Public Health Department. So, I did want to just say a big thank you to all of these groups for their time and their consideration, and also for recognizing that one of our departments getting any kind of funding is good for all of our departments, because it means more of that ever-decreasing pie can go to some of these other groups, and I just appreciate that I was able to have those conversations with all of these different folks and that they were so supportive. So, thank you.
Yeah, good job.
All right, we're on ten C, village department head, staff, or consultant comments. Jeff, do you want to start us off?
Well, I just was going to, yeah, we covered it a little bit there, but yeah, we will be, look forward to, we've gone through a long process for the, the whole mowing forums and input and everything like that. We will be structuring a public works, uh, meeting as, as a time of information, well, I mean, it's going to be discussion on, on the report that's been prepared. I don't, it'll be up to the committee if you want to welcome public comment, I think it's always positive to have a public comment on things, and, and then, we'll be looking for recommendations from, from you to the village board. It might be worthwhile to save people's time if you can make it that night, even if you're not on the committee, great, if not, it's not a big deal, we'll, we'll cover it back at the village board as well.
That was the twenty-second?
Twenty-second, it's a Wednesday evening, yes.
And what time is that?
Five o'clock.
Okay? Anybody, anybody else? Okay? Rachel? Nothing? Chief? All right? Okay, let's go to ten. Ten D, village board comments. Anybody? Amanda, you want to start us off?
Sure. Not happy to be given a statement about this, but I feel compelled to, to say something, so I have something prepared that I'm going to read. I'd like to give a shout-out to our staff members, LeAnn Rhodes, Elise Cruz, and Martin Shanks, and any other staff who may have been present, and to the Oregon Police Department, Responding Officer Lehman and Detective Gowen for their courage and their professionalism last Tuesday morning at one of the focus group meetings for the Oregon Parks and Recreation Plan. First, a little background, Ms. Vogler contacted me to ask me to advocate for the Friends of the Oregon Sculpture Garden, having a representative at a focus group. I had a conversation with village administrator, Martin Shanks, about it, and I was given reasons as to why the Oregon Sculpture Garden was not asked to participate. This was an invitation-only event intended to provide a space for voices that we don't hear from as often in the village, held in the Village Hall on a day when the Village Hall was closed to the public. Focus groups with staff are not subject to open meetings laws, because there was no quorum of village board members present and no votes were being taken. Many community groups were also not invited due to space and with the plan that there will be lots of other opportunities for them to give feedback. I called Ms. Vogler back on the Monday before the focus group meetings to relay this message and state that I agreed with the staff's decision to not include a Sculpture Garden board representative. Two representatives from the Friends of the Oregon Sculpture Garden, including Ms. Vogler, who is the spouse of a sitting trustee, showed up uninvited anyway. They were handing out a half-sheet of paper with numerous claims on it, including that they were being discriminated against and that three trustees had advocated for them to be invited. While they are entitled to their opinion, I wholeheartedly disagree with their assertions. They were asked politely to leave multiple times. When they refused, staff called the police, who were able to de-escalate the situation, and the Oregon Sculpture Garden representatives eventually left the meeting. This was an outrageous act born of privilege. Ms. Vogler is married to a sitting trustee who also happens to be on the personal, Personnel and Finance Committee, directly overseeing the policies and procedures that govern staff. This puts staff in a very awkward position. How many of us would be brave enough to call the police on the spouse of one of your bosses? It would have been easy for them to acquiesce and just allow the Oregon Sculpture Garden representatives to stay and participate. However, the purpose of this focus group was to hear from other voices, ones we don't hear from as often, but who are also stakeholders in this community. Ms. Vogler was invited to have the Oregon Sculpture Garden supporters fill out the community survey that will be coming out, send their thoughts to board members via email, comment at village board meetings, and attend the public visioning meetings that are going to be held. All of the method, of the methods of gathering information for the parks plan are weighted equally. The Oregon Sculpture Garden supporters' input in the past for park issues has been frequent and plentiful. I'm also really concerned about how the village will be able to work with the Friends of the Oregon Sculpture Garden if this behavior is condoned. What will happen the next time they are told no? I don't think their bully tactics should be rewarded. I have been asked whether Ms. Vogler had the right to peacefully protest, as all citizens in this community have. The answer is yes, but that also means she has a right to the consequences. This reminds me of a quote by the late Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, "Fight for the things that you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you." The actions of these individuals crossed the line, but I'm proud of the village employees, including the responding police officer and detective, and how they handled the situation. I must act in the best interests of everyone who attended the focus groups to have their voice heard and who had to deal with this disruption. This is in harmony with the best interests of the village, the staff, and the Oregon Police Department, and I commend their actions.
All right. I, I have a much shorter one, but I'd like to, like to read it, but, so, after, after all of this, I, I just want to say I support the, the methodology that was used by Elise and Martin's staff to select the participants for the focus group. I also support, uh, support the action of the staff in dealing with the situation at Village Hall on February twenty-eighth. And Chief, I also commend the, the Police Department and the two officers who responded and how they handled the situation. My feeling is that the, the village shouldn't, and, and I'm going to say it, my, the village should not be bullied by the Friends of Oregon Sculpture Garden or any other group, and that's how I felt, that we, we've been bullied, we're being bullied, so, that's my comments. Um, no. This is for the board. Go ahead, Carleen.
I just want to concur completely with what Amanda said. This has really been a long process that is far from over. The comprehensive plan and the Parks and Recreation Plan are just starting, and I also want to say that I did not advocate for any members of the, the Sculpture Garden, Friends of Sculpture Garden, to be included. I asked questions, and I had conversation with, with Susan Chetavi, who is here, about that, about the committee and, or about the focus group, I apologize, focus group, and about who was invited, so I, I concur completely, and I congratulate, I congratulate you on the way you handled it, because it must have been very difficult.
Phil?
Thanks to Amanda for putting together such an eloquent statement, I couldn't agree I would just add that as someone that's been at a place of work and the police were called, it's a very stressful and difficult situation for anyone that works in the facility, so I think all of the staff is congratulating us getting through this, so, and I would ask that Amanda's statement be incorporated into the minutes.
Yeah, Jenna?
I also wanted to thank Amanda for, for her statement, I support it. Thank you to the staff, our Police Department, for responding as you did in handling the situation in a professional way, and for continuing to do the focus groups for the rest of the residents who were coming afterwards. To Phil's point, that, that is an extremely challenging situation to be in, and the fact that you all were able to maintain course in light of that and continue to allow these other citizens to share their voices is incredible, and thank you for doing that.
All right. May else? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go on to eleven, which is announcements in miscellaneous business. Eleven A is a comprehensive, uh, plan, public visioning workshop, Thursday, March ninth, six to eight P.M., Park and Recreation Community Survey, which is open from March first to the twenty-second through Survey Monkey. Eleven B is.
I was trying to say something.
You may, sure.
I, I regret that I already have a, a professional obligation that evening, I have a presentation in Walworth County, so I will not be able to be at that, so, I'll tune in, and I will fill out the survey.
And then, eleven B is just the Oregon Police Department was awarded fifteen thousand twenty-four dollars, a grant from the Firehouse Subs for purchase of AEDs, so, great, great, chief. And then, ten, ten C is upcoming meetings, that was in our packet, so we can get that stuff in our calendar, and then, we're on to twelve.
Can I just confirm that OCA will be covering that, uh, the workshop, by asking Dan?
Yeah, I was going to mention that, the visioning workshop, it's not currently the plan, it's because of the setup of the room, multiple conversations going on, that's not, I think, able to be recorded, that's not currently a part of the plan, but there will be minutes, and notes taken, all the materials passed out and provided will be collected as well, there'll be a lot of written workshops to be filling out.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll take a motion to adjourn in a second. Jenna, and then I'll give it to Amanda, okay? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.